Good evening. I'd like to call to order this, the regular town council meeting for Tuesday, May 10th, 2016. The opening prayer will be given by Father Thomas Walsh of the Most Holy Trinity Church. Please rise.
Good hour Creator. Just as the winter snows yield to the spring thaw and April showers give way to May flowers, grant that the toils, struggles, and frustrations of our democratic process may give birth to a flourishing community where the rule of law is respected, justice is upheld, mercy is extended, true brotherhood is practiced, and basic human needs are fulfilled. We ask all this as sons and daughters of our heavenly Father, from whom comes all that is good. Amen.
We'll have the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you. Fishbein.
Here.
Laffin.
Here.
Laterno.
Here.
Marone.
Here.
Chertel.
Present.
Sullivan.
Here.
Testa.
Here.
Zandri.
Here.
Chairman Savoni.
Here.
Next item on the agenda is item three, the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve and accept consent agenda items A through R.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, consent agenda passes. Item four, items removed from the consent agenda, there are none. Item five, public question and answer period. Mr. Cerdullo.
Paul Cerdullo, Two Bayberry Drive. Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening.
I have a question for the mayor through the chair. Mr. Mayor, in reading the 1617 budget proposal, the opening paragraph, I think that, I think you pretty much nailed it right on the money when you described the condition of the, essentially our, our flat economy, the fact that we're, inflation is .2 percent, CPI is actually minus one, which is, which is terrible, Connecticut economy is struggling, and the tax grand list has declined this year. This is the second time in 10 years, so property values are following, falling, and of course state budgets are under pressure. And the interesting thing is Wallingford's per capita income is lower than the state average per capita, which might be a first. And then you go on to say that we must adopt budgets to foster family and business vitality. You had me up to that point. After that, you lost me because as I read through the budget, obviously you're proposing a, a tax increase for, since before the beginning of the Great Recession. And I guess my question is, is there a message that you're trying to deliver through this introduction? And if there is, what is it? I mean, I can tell you what my interpretation of it is, that, hey, things are bad, things can continue to get bad, and we as taxpayers and residents should be prepared to continue to pay more in taxes. Is that what you're trying to communicate? Because that's kind of what I'm getting out of it.
Well, the issue is, how fast should spending go up? And the message is, the spending cannot go up to unsustainable levels.
Right.
The effort with the budget was to reflect a reduction overall in our spending as to the requests, as to new programs, et cetera. But still provide essential services upon which many of our population depend. So to reach a point where there's no tax increase, I think we would have to be willing to say we are going to cut back on services and not provide services. Then the question is, well, what services is no one relying upon? In difficult times, you have the more vulnerable population that is even more reliant upon services provided by government. So at this point, I'm not willing to say that we should cut back on services, but I think the, the issue of how quickly they rise in cost becomes a significant issue to deal with.
Okay. Well, I guess my, my belief is that there's another alternative. It seems to me that our process has been to increase taxes, expenses come up, increase taxes, expenses come up, and on and on. That's gone on for a long time. I, I don't think it's any secret that I, I believe we're being overtaxed for a number of things that we've talked about already in the past. I'm not going to go into that, but I think there's another alternative, which I think has been communicated, at least folks have attempted to communicate it, without cutting services. And that is to do two things. One is to attack financial problem areas that have already been identified. And, and then the second approach would be to, I believe, make an investment in, in the resources to come in and help the town identify opportunities for improving productivity, cost effectiveness, improving our business practices, the whole gamut. It's, it's a huge job, but I think we're at a point right now, in my opinion, where we, we're at a critical point because I don't think, if you look at the state of Connecticut as you identified, the state is, is in, is not in good shape. I don't see the economy growing. That's going to ripple down to, to Wallingford. So we can, we can sort of continue to do the same thing we've been doing, or we can be more proactive. I just don't think that the approach we're using today is going to work as, as we move forward. I think what that will do is, that's going to force us eventually, and maybe we saw a little bit of that at the last meeting, to begin to make draconian cuts just because we're, you know, we're trying to manage by cutting dollars that we're giving to the departments rather than looking at the operation and making it more effective and efficient. It's a big job, but if we don't do that, I think we're, we're, we're looking at a pretty, pretty dismal future, fiscal future. And I'm, I'm speaking now about the taxpayers because as, as I've said before, the municipality is doing great. If you look at the balance sheet, the balance sheet has grown 15 percent in the last 10 years on the net positive side. And of course, the reason for that is that we have this policy where we, we pay cash for big ticket items. As soon as we do that, that item goes on the budget as an asset, but there's no offsetting liability because we pay cash for it. So we're building up these reserves and these assets, and make no mistake, we're doing it by overtaxing residents. Thank you.
Mr. Morganstein.
Good evening, Larry Morganstein, South Main Street. As I would hope everybody is aware, opiates, heroin has been a focus, especially for this town, for at least three years and should have been before that, but it's become more in focus since then in 2013. Recently, April 30th, I believe, was Drug Takeback Day. Thousands of police departments collected 447 tons of unused and unwanted medicines. And that just gives you an idea of the scope of what we're dealing with. The other thing that was announced in the last few weeks is that the state of Connecticut's Dropbox program has now grown to 60, and they're adding another 11 at all the state trooper barracks. Other thing that I thought was really interesting, because what I always thought about the Dropbox program that was good is that it was quantifiable, and the state released that they collected, and again, they quoted 60, but not all those 60 were up all year. But this Dropbox has collected 23,000 pounds of unwanted and unused medicines. So if you take that average, you could kind of figure out it's between 380, 400 pounds per year per Dropbox, which is pretty significant. Now, the reason I'm up here tonight and I see Chief Wright is here is that we instituted a policy after two years of no action of having townspeople be able to use the police station as a Dropbox. It's been over a year, and I think the police chief knows, but does anybody know how we've done in over a year of collecting? Because we could quantify that now against a Dropbox program and know how we're doing.
Chief, if you'd like, you're welcome to answer.
Good evening, Madam Clerk, Chief William Wright for the record. I couldn't tell you with any certainty as I stand before you, Mr. Morganstein, how many pounds we've collected or what that total number is, though it's something that I could get for you in short order. I will offer you that on the Drug Takeback Day on that Saturday, we experienced an increase with people coming into the lobby, and we just continue to accept those unwanted medications as we always have. So we don't weigh them, we don't spend any more time worrying about how much they weigh. We take them properly, dispose of them certainly accordingly. So our program continues to work. It's efficient, I will offer you that just today. Someone came in and dropped probably what I would consider to be 12 or 15 pounds worth of unwanted medication. So it continues to work. We're happy with the program that we have. I could give you the total number certainly with a little bit of work of how many and, you know, how many people come into the lobby to do that, but our program works and we think it works very efficiently.
Actually, I have a source, and I was hoping you could confirm it, but I had heard that you guys in the last 12 months had taken in over 500 pounds, which is actually over the average, and I think that's wonderful. If you guys have done that, and I'd like to have that be confirmed, but that shows that the need is there. And I don't think when it was proposed, the coalition or any of us who support the Dropbox, the main component was that the drugs be safely removed from the community and disposed of properly. And if we've accomplished that, and it sounds like we have, and we could compare it to the Dropbox program, I think that's a significant addition to our community, and you've done a good job, and I'd like to encourage that to continue. But I, I hope those numbers are accurate, and if it is, that's a great job by you guys. And the only thing I'd like to add to that is that I, again, I think it's great that you stepped up and found a middle way that really met the need, but I think it's a tragedy that two years passed, from 2013 to 2015, where over 50 people died of overdoses in this town. And if we could have collected those drugs, we might have changed some of that trajectory. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Any other questions, comments from the public? Mr. Kennedy.
Don Kennedy, Bull Avenue. I had no intentions of speaking tonight, but when I just heard the mayor say that in order to save money, he'd have to cut services, and I am so tired of listening to that because I have worked in many, many corporations throughout the U.S., and every time that we've done reengineering, every time we've done process improvement, we've cut expenses and we've increased services and we've, we've actually cut people. I think the town needs to, to budget or to put somebody in to the, the, you know, probably this year it's too late, but next year's budget, to actually start looking at process improvement, to increase services and cut expenses. That is such a falsehood when I keep hearing the mayor saying he has to cut services. There is no way you should, you should have to cut services to cut expenses. A little bit of technology will go a long way, and the cost of technology is nothing as compared to the cost to people. Thank you.
Any other comments from the public, questions from the public? Seeing none, I close the public question and answer period. On the consent agenda, item 3N, passing a point, resulted in the appointment of Gina Morganstein as an alternate on the Planning and Zoning Commission to fill an unexpired three-year term effective immediately and ending January 8th, 2018. Ms. Morganstein, would you like to come up to be sworn to that position? All right, moving along, item six.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the mutual police assistance agreement between Wallingford Police Department and Cheshire Deplete Department for combined emergency services teams.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Good evening, Chief. I see you've brought a guest with you.
I have, good evening, William Wright, Police Chief.
Deputy Chief, Brian Pknarsik, Cheshire.
Good evening, gentlemen. If you could talk to us about what we're being asked to consider here.
The first of two items is a request to formally merge, if you will, our SWAT team with the Cheshire Police Department SWAT team. For the last 18 months or so, our two teams have been training together. We've reduced the size of our team in total. Cheshire has also reduced the size of theirs. But in actuality, what we once had, certainly here in Wallingford, is a team of 10, now actually is a team of 16. So we've increased the size overall, but have been able to, through the scale of economy, save substantial money there by not equipping two more operators for our team, and I can't speak for Cheshire, but certainly I think they would reflect the same thing. This is very common in our region and certainly throughout the state. There are some teams that cover 10 and 12 towns. We find it beneficial to partner with Cheshire, not only in this regard, but in others, because they share seemingly the same conservative approach to things that we do. And when you talk about SWAT operations, conservative is a word that certainly is appropriate. So I come before you this evening to seek your approval to formalize this team with Cheshire.
Thank you. So if I understood you correctly, there are two full-time positions that you could avoid filling by entering into this agreement. Did I understand that correctly?
Yes, we had an opening on our team to begin with, and more recently, we removed a member of the team and gave him increased responsibilities in our own department. So we're down to eight, and Cheshire is also fielding a team of eight.
Thank you. Deputy Chief, is there anything you want to add to that?
I just echo Chief Wright's sentiments. The leadership and philosophies between the two towns are similarly situated, similarly situated, excuse me. This is a team effort that makes sense at this point.
Thank you. Questions from the council? Councilor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
I just, you know, we've been talking about the, the joined regionalization of communications between at least these two departments. Does this in any way, shape, or form affect that potential relationship?
No, sir.
If we were able to merge it, would it enhance this relationship?
Certainly. Although limited in functionality, or not functionality, but the amount of times that the team has used, I think more appropriate for increasing or improving our efficiencies would be the next item that's on the agenda this evening.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions from the council? There being none, would you please call the roll?
Fishbein.
Yes.
Laffin.
Yes.
Laterno.
Yes.
Marone.
Yes.
Chertel.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Testa.
Yes.
Zandri.
Yes.
Chairman Savoni.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, you need to provide a chance for the public to be heard as well.
Thank you for reminding me. Everything was going so quietly and smoothly, and I couldn't understand why.
I just wanted to make a comment with regard to, this, this represents, you hear the state certainly pushing regionalism, and this is an example of providing a sound, very sustainable service, and when you, when you get into specialty kinds of items, this means that both towns don't have to invest and, and have that equipment, so there's a cost factor as well. But the integration of, of neighboring, the neighboring department is more than just a mutual aid. If we were in an emergency, we can, every community can call on another one for mutual aid. This is an ongoing, well-thought-out, in any circumstance, we have the capability of responding in an appropriate manner. So it, it is much larger than what might be looked at at first blush.
Thank you. If there is comment from the public, I can recall the vote from the council. Are there any questions or comments from the public? Okay, I guess I guessed correctly, and I won't do that again. But thank you. Onto item seven.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the interlocal agreement between the towns of Wallingford and Cheshire for police services.
Sir.
Moved and seconded. This is just part, step two of the same item. Is that correct, Chief?
It actually is a different item, it's a different agreement. The interlocal agreement will actually give police authority to Wallingford police officers acting in Cheshire, and will also give Cheshire officers the same authority acting in Wallingford. As it stands right now, our authority is certainly limited in the town of Cheshire, and likewise their authority is limited here except under certain circumstances. This will allow us to join together, if you will, as relates to examples such as DUI checkpoints, small task forces for crimes that may be occurring across one town lane or the other, and will give our officers each the authority to work lawfully in the other town. We both serve the same GA, we go to the same court. It's highly looked upon by the court that this occur, and it is frequently occurring in certainly other communities in the state.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the council? Councilor Testa?
Thank you. Chief?
Good evening.
Chief, welcome. I'm thrilled to see this kind of cooperation. My question about the interlocal agreement is, however, is this, is the, I guess what this basically says is, Cheshire cops have jurisdiction now in Wallingford? If we use the terminology we probably all remember from TV shows. Is this across the board or only when you're working in particular types of operations?
It would be across the board. But certainly the thought and the push will be to work jointly together and certainly not acting independently of the other community.
No, but the spirit of that is fantastic. Okay. What the, um, does it, does it impose a certain amount of additional responsibility on your officers now when they are in the respective other community?
No, not any more than.
You know what I'm saying? Because I'm assuming your, your officers walking around Wallingford, you know, are always on, if you will. Go out of town, are they always on now because they have jurisdiction in Cheshire? Does that put added responsibility upon them?
No, not any more than they certainly have right now.
They have already, okay. There's a certain amount of that, no matter where they go.
Absolutely.
Oh, very good. All right. One of my best friends is, is an officer in Cheshire and used to joke around that, you know, she had no authority in Wallingford, now I have to behave when I'm at her house. I guess that's, that's all right. All kidding aside, thank you, and it's, this is really a good thing. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly. Councilor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What's to assure us, I mean, we as a body have a limited amount of control over the staffing of the Wallingford Police Department. We have no control over the staffing of the Cheshire Police Department. What's to stop the scenario where Cheshire decreases their staffing reliant upon this agreement and it impacts upon Wallingford public safety?
Well, I don't foresee that occurring. Certainly, we can sever this agreement in 30 days by the manner in which it's constructed if we feel that that, that is occurring. I have every assurance from Chief Dreyf that in the limited role that this agreement would be in play for both towns to work jointly. It would be for those circumstances where either he or I needed additional labor for a, more than likely, a certain set of circumstances that just gives us the lawful authority or my, certainly officers, to work in the conjoining town.
But you, in response to Councilor Testa's question, you said it was across the board, which is a little bit more on a case, than on a case-by-case basis.
I think his question was more of the authority and isn't limited to certain circumstances or is it across the board? Our officers would have legal and lawful authority to act within the town of Cheshire, and they would certainly have that same privilege, if you will, here. Although the intent is to limit this agreement certainly to those circumstances where it's appropriate.
Although not drafted that way.
I'm sorry?
Although not written that way. It's, it's sort of open. It's, there are no, I mean, the chief in Cheshire could, could get replaced, and I understand it's a gentleman's agreement as to the amount it's going to be used. And certainly, you know, decision to terminate an agreement would be retrospective after a bad event happens in our town where we were unable to deal with our own public safety, and then we go back and say, well, this, this agreement isn't in our best interest, so we're going to sever it, and there's already been harm. I have reservations. So I think we have a good department. I, you know, I understand the, you know, case-by-case basis and, you know, we got to call in somebody else, but certainly when there's a Wallingford-Cheshire situation, many times we fall upon the state police to assist us in that situation. I'm just concerned about the possible impact upon Wallingford's residents, so I'm not going to be voting in favor of this. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly. Councilor Sullivan.
I think I'm going to echo the mayor's sentiments early, that regionalization is something we want to see more and more of. I think this is a great cooperative effort in making sure that both towns equally are protected. One question I have is that officers do work off-duty here and there, construction sites, whatever. Just out of curiosity, would we ever see a Cheshire officer in Wallingford working those kind of jobs and maybe a Wallingford officer working in Cheshire?
There is no plan for that.
Okay. That's all I need. Thank you.
And Councilor Laterno.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Chiefs.
Good evening.
On page three.
On page three, B, under other terms, paragraph two, withdrawal from, I think you've covered this already, but I just want to reiterate, withdrawal from or termination of this agreement by either party shall be made by 30 days' written notice. The decision to withdraw, terminate, shall be made in the same manner as the approval set forth in seven dash three-three-nine C. So with this, over the life of this agreement, this is in place. So either side, if there's a problem, or something's not working out, this is the escape clause?
Yes.
Okay. And I didn't see in here, but is there a term for this agreement, or is this, once we do this, it's just going to be ongoing, or until it stops, or doesn't stop, or?
It's my belief that once it's approved, it's ongoing, but certainly it's subject to, you know, review at any time, I would think, by either party.
Okay. Okay. I don't have a problem with this. I think it's good. I think regionalization is going to happen more and more. I'd like to see it happen more and more. And, you know, I think for the council's sake, it's something that we can keep an eye on. Maybe next year this time, we call Abby, come in front of us and give us an update, and say, you know, how's it going? And you could say, we've had problems or not. And, you know, I think that would be fair enough. So, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Questions or comments from the public? Sir in the back? Yes. Name an address for the record, please.
Joseph Bozzi, 43 Bayberry Drive. A couple of questions. Is there a model that you guys looked at in other towns that worked integrating two police departments? And my second question, one pro and one con?
So, yes, the answer to your first question is yes. The town of North Haven has now merged services with six or seven other towns heading down along the shoreline, out to and stretching into Madison. And we use their agreement as sort of a template to construct ours.
Now, can I ask one more?
Yes, you can ask another question.
What do you share fundamentally? Are there differences that you guys are going to clash on, or?
No, which is the reason that certainly I think both towns are choosing to work with each other. We're very conservative in our approach to law enforcement services. We both have communities that expect high levels of service. Both communities or both departments are full-service police departments. Our communities demand it, and we provide it. So our merger with Cheshire, with both the SWAT team and then this agreement, is illustrative of that high level of service which both communities have not only come to expect, but certainly they deserve.
Pro and con? What's the biggest con, disadvantage of this?
More than likely gathering the resources that Cheshire might need in short order if they weren't already working.
What type of resources?
Whatever resources, certainly specialty resources that they might request from us. And I certainly think that that would be a con for them as well. Not everyone is working all at the same time. So if you're looking for specialty officers with specialized training, and they're not currently working, it could take some time to get them in.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Certainly. Any other questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for a vote.
Okay. Fishbein?
No.
Laffin?
Yes.
Laterno?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Chertel?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman Cervoni?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you for your time, and thank you for your hard work. Item eight is a public hearing. I hereby convene the public hearing for the $2,254,528 appropriation and bond authorization for the 2016-17 capital improvement program. The ordinance, which is the subject of this public hearing, is available to the public and may be obtained at this meeting from the town clerk. Is there a motion and a second to read the title of the proposed ordinance and to waive the reading of the remainder of the ordinance incorporating its full text into the minutes of this meeting?
So moved.
Moved, seconded by Counselor Sullivan.
Yep.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
I apologize. Fishbein?
No.
Laffin?
Yes.
Laterno?
Yes.
Marone? Sorry, I didn't hear you.
Yes.
Thank you. Chertel?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman Cervoni?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Yes, it does. An ordinance appropriating $2,254,528 for the planning, acquisition, and construction of various municipal capital improvements, 2016-17, and authorizing the issue of $2,254,528 bonds of the town to meet said appropriation and pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose. Are there any comments from the public? Mr. Cardullo?
Bless you. I think you did the same thing last year. There was an appropriation for like $3 million. There was a lot of back and forth on, why did we really need it? And I'm not sure I totally understand, and maybe this will clarify it for me. But it seems to me that the 2.254 million on page 84 is already covered, at least this is my perception, in the budget under the capital nonrecurring department. So is that true? You know, it's part of the expense budget, which tells me that you're going to spend it. So why do we need a bond authorization?
Mr. Bozzi, if you would?
A portion that is funded by the electric pilot actually comes into the general fund as a revenue per the charter. So it's on the revenue side of the equation. Page eight or page nine of that budget book.
But that's not what the book says.
But then it's also on the expenditure side, the 1.889 million, I believe it was,
Correct.
which I believe is the page you're looking at. That is actually the transfer out of the general fund to the bookkeeping fund for the cap and nonrecurring.
Okay.
Just to comply with the general fund, I'm sorry, the town charter language.
Okay. So-
So it's an in and an out in the same amount in the general fund.
Right.
And it's, it's shown in the, in the cap and nonrecurring bookkeeping fund, which is separate from the general fund.
Right.
As part of the six-year capital improvement plan.
Okay. But are you planning on spending the 2.264, which is in the expense budget? I understand what you're saying about how it gets there. But it's actually in the expense side of the budget, capital nonrecurring, for 1-889-528?
Yes, that will be transferred to the cap and nonrecurring fund.
Okay.
In its entirety. That's correct.
Now, is that going to be used to fund the items that are listed?
Yes.
Okay. Well, that gets back to my original question. Why do we need to bond it? We're already allocating, is it your intention to pay cash for it? It looks like we're paying cash for it.
The bond, the bond gives us, bond authorization does two things. It gives us flexibility in case we wanted to issue bonds. The town, the town has issued bonds and paid them back out of the cap and nonrecurring bookkeeping fund in the past. We haven't done it lately, but it does give the town flexibility for that. And the second thing is to allow those funds to be authorized, to be expended, without those funds lapsing until the projects that are listed that you mentioned on, on that page are completed.
Okay. Well, I still don't understand. You're allocating the funds, you're locking up the funds already. So there's no danger of the funds going away. So why do we have to go out and get authorization to bond again? It seems to me that we're double budgeting for the same items. And it's essentially authorizing the town to go out and borrow more money, which adds cost. I don't know why we're doing it.
It is-
I don't see it like-
It is my answer, so it's-
Okay. So I guess my last comment is that I would recommend that you disapprove it, because we absolutely don't need it. We're already budgeting for it. And I think it's bad policy to simply allow or permit the town to go out and bond additional funds. It just brings more money into, into the, into the town coffers that is going to cost us interest. We don't need it. So I would say disapprove it.
Gentlemen in the back, is it Mr. Bozzi?
What's the, the cost of capital for the debt? What's the interest payment, term structure?
Well, it depends. It depends on how far out the-
Short-term? Is it five years, 10 years? Is it a year?
It could be five, 10, 20, maximum 20 under Connecticut state law for most bond issues.
Mr. Bozzi, if you just give the clerk your name and address again.
Joseph Bozzi, 43 Bayberry Drive. You're welcome. And the interest rate for those bonds? Who's able to buy those bonds?
They're fluctuating now on the short side, maybe between one and three-quarters to 2%, all the way up to 4% if it were a 20-year bond issue, or four and a half.
It's better than the treasury rate right now, so.
On the, you know, on the longer end.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Now, who's able to buy those bonds? Institutions?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
Buy the bonds? Who's able to buy them?
Uh, right, we bid, we bid the bonds. We send, we sell the bonds competitively. So the, we usually get seven to eight, maybe nine vendors, underwriting firms that bid on our bonds, and you can buy it through one of them.
Now, is it every week? You sell them, or?
No, no, we only sell them, we just sold in October of 2015. We're probably selling again in either the fall of this calendar year, October, November again, or possibly January, February-ish of 2017.
4% is a good rate, right?
Well, if you hold it for the 20 years, that'll be on your 20-year side. It'll be, you know, more like towards the one and a half-ish on the, one and three-quarters-ish on the-
Hopefully the rates don't rise, because then your bond prices go down, right?
If you want to give me a call, I can give you the last couple of underwriting firms that won the bid to see if they have any left in inventory. They're usually sold prior to- But that's, that's, some folks have called me, and I've given them some contact information. I don't know if they've purchased any bonds or not, because usually when those, when those underwriters are bidding on your bonds, they're pretty much pre-sold.
Gotcha.
Unless they're going to keep some in their own inventory for their own, maybe as a hedge in their own investment portfolios.
Now, do you have a lot of debt? I'm new, this is my first time here. Do you have a lot of debt on the books right now?
We've got about 30, 31. We sold 13. We'll be paying off about five this year, so we'll have about 39 million, 40 million at the end of this fiscal year.
Centage to your budget, what is that?
As far as the repayment?
Yeah.
The repayment is approximately 3%. Principal and interest, 3.5% of our budget.
Okay, that's all. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Gross? I thought I saw another hand back there behind you, but...
I figure I'm big enough to block him. Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. How long does a road last? Because you're bonding for roads here. How long does the road last?
10, 12, 15 years. I have no idea.
So it's a long-term capital project. The money comes from normally the electric division? This money's the electric division money?
Correct.
What else could you use the electric division money for?
For, as far as-
Well, because when-
These funds here? Nothing, nothing does the infrastructure assets that you see listed in the cap and nonrecurring budget request.
So it has to stay in some type of infrastructure?
I couldn't hear what you said.
It has to stay in some type of infrastructure, the money from the electric division?
Yes.
So roads, and what else could it go for?
I still can't hear you, Bob. I'm sorry.
Sorry. I don't know what's wrong with the mic.
Well, don't forget, I'm two-thirds deaf in one ear, so.
Okay, sorry. I can speak louder. Okay. I forgot what the question was. The roads, what else could it go for besides roads?
You mean the cap and nonrecurring?
Yeah, the electric division money.
Well, it's all, it's all in there, and it's used primarily for infrastructure, streets, sidewalks, bridges, curbing, traffic easements, things of that nature over time. We've done some minor park improvements, things of that nature.
So if you didn't, because it came up, well, if something comes up, you would use it for something else. You really couldn't use it for-
No, we can't because of the ordinance. That's another reason that's, I should have remembered that from Mr. Cardullo's question, that, that, the bond ordinance locks us in legally to spend the funds on what's listed on that page versus anything else we wish to spend it on.
But the money that comes in from the electric division has to be used for specific projects based on the ordinance that you guys have set up. Or not you, but the, no, it doesn't. It does or doesn't?
It was set up many years ago in the cap and nonrecurring fund, yeah. That was established by ordinance back in 1961, 62, or something like that.
So it has, so it needs to go for these roads, sidewalks, those type of things, or can it go for something else?
Well, my reading of it was for longer-term capital infrastructure assets.
Firehouse?
Well, that would be $4 million, so that would wipe up our money for a couple of years.
What portion?
I imagined it probably could for a building.
So, I mean, I'm not opposed to, I mean, every year, it's the same song and dance with this. Mr. Bozzi sits there, you pay him every year to come here. Attorney, sorry, Attorney Bozzi comes every year. No disrespect to Attorney, but I mean, because you require him to be here. You pay him, council goes through this procedure, public speaks, it's pretty much the same questions. And every year, I can't remember one year where you've bonded. You said it happened. Do you know when?
I have not in the 11 years I've been here. I do know that it was a couple, maybe three or four years before I got here. And we paid the bonds back out of the cap and nonrecurring fund that you're seeing on that page. So what it does is, it actually reduces the amount of streets and bridges and roads that can be done with those monies. And I, we have not had to utilize anything else other than the pilot money in my 11 years to do that.
Is the mayor's going to say something?
I think, as has been stated in other occasions, a number of things are now being picked up by cap and non that used to be in our regular budget. Some subdivision paving. In the past, there was $300,000 to $400,000 in our regular budget for Public Works to do subdivision paving. That money's gone. $200,000 was, was in the, was a separate budget item for sidewalks. That's no longer in the regular budget. Now that's in cap and non, which reduces the amount of roads, bridges, et cetera, we can do. It's, it's increasingly had to pick up where money has been unfortunately unable to be funded in the regular budget. So cap and non is necessary for very basic structural, infrastructure improvements. And we have more than enough roads in order to utilize those funds. But I think we have to keep in mind, the budget outside of cap and non had significant money in the past to do a lot of that infrastructure. And that money, because of the economy, because of multiple factors, no longer can be afforded in the regular budget. It is now in the cap and nonrecurring.
So why don't you bond, especially at these historically low rates?
You want to get into the philosophies? I'm saying why the project is here. How we manage the funding is a completely separate question.
Well-
We do not look to take on enormous debt, like many other layers of government, and have that principal and interest payment be an ever-hanging noose about the neck of the town. The town, at one point, put half of the town's operating budget in, and bonded it. And that happened in the early '70s, I think, and we were paying- think, and we were paying $500,000 a year up until the late 90s in order to pay that off. It's, we're managing well. The reports we get on our finances say we are managing the assets well. To change that, I'm not sure why we should.
That's a matter of opinion. That's not necessarily, they're just looking at assets. They're not looking at how you're managing it. They're just seeing what's on the books. The five-year note then, Mr. Boz, would be about one and a half percent if you were to borrow? Somewhere in that range?
I don't know what the five-year would be, but we wouldn't probably be borrowing for five. It would be longer than that. We'd be selling for probably 10 to, anywhere probably between 10 and 20.
10, two and a half?
Yeah, probably around two and a half, two and three quarters. I haven't looked in a while, so I'm going to ask for some wiggle room if you don't mind.
No, 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 I'm just, ballpark, I mean, I understand. It's, I'm just saying...
The traditional yield curve has started to return. The longer you go out, the more the interest rate increases. It was choppy for the last four or five years, so you really couldn't say that. So, yeah, I would say up to a maximum of maybe 3% on the 10, 12, 14 years. It might be a little high.
That's a little high. But just to the council, bond it then. Don't let them pay cash. Bond it, pay it back over 10 or five or 10-year period. You're paying virtually nothing in interest. You're taking your cash and you're going to pay it out. Because remember, the time value of money, 10 years from now, that money, that payment you're making is worth a lot less than it is today. And, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Chairman, if we're hearing that borrowing and bonding money is the answer to government's problems, I'll leave it at that. I think we have plenty of examples to show us where that is not the direction to go.
It's not to bond everything. We're at a very low rate. You're in tough economic times per year, say. Interest rates are historically low rates. You're going to be paying back virtually, I mean, if you have to borrow, I mean, you have corporations borrowing, well, in Europe, they're borrowing at 0%, but at 1%, one and a half percent because they can, and that makes the value of money so much more valuable to them today and in the future. And it gives them assets, it gives them the availability to have the money. Same thing for us. Then if you don't want to bond, Mr. Mayor, then why do you go through the charade every year?
We do bond. Where it's appropriate for large projects, we do. These smaller projects, you know, I'm just amazed at the example we see sitting up in Hartford, that we have people here saying the town should borrow more in order to provide the services, or maybe not the services, but at least the improvements necessary. The governor is desperate to set up a lockbox for funding for infrastructure improvements. They don't have the cash to do it. I just, I can't believe it.
Then if that's your position, then don't do, don't have Attorney Fozzie sitting here and don't have agenda item number eight on the agenda. Don't even bother going through it. If you're totally set against bonding, then why even do this? Thank you.
As, as our comptroller very articulately stated, you need flexibility. It's managing funding. At times you need the cash. At times you've got to borrow because you, cash is demanded for something else. We need that flexibility.
Ms. Morgenstein?
Gina Morgenstein, South Main Street. As Mr. Chardullo comes up and understands the in and outs of money and tries to, with Mr. Boz, sort out how it works here in the municipality within the state, I was taken by the fact that, Mr. Boz, one of your answers was, "This is done this way because of charter." So the first meeting of the charter commission is two nights from now, and I don't have the paper in front of me of what you, the council, have charged the charter with doing. But do we have, do you know, Mr. Boz, is there anything on the question of requested changes for the charter that would help with the numbers and how it's done and such?
No one has asked me for input on anything to do with the charter. So in short answer to your question, no. I don't have a, and honestly, I don't have a problem with it. And please let me take a step backward. I don't want that to appear as though I'm blaming the charter, if you will, or using that as an excuse. The charter basically says that the, the funds shall come into, from the electric pilot into the general fund. And that's why it shows up in both places. Mr. Chardullo is correct, it shows up in both places. That doesn't mean it's being spent in both, both places. It comes into the general fund from the electric division, and then we send it from the general fund, and we charge the general fund and send it to the cap and non-recurring fund where it's spent over the next several years to do those projects that are approved by the, by the council during the budget-making process. Probably because, you know, don't forget this, some of these budget provisions are going back to the 60s and bookkeeping funds have evolved and changed, and governmental accounting has changed quite a bit in the last 10, 15 years, forget about 40 years. So I, if I made it sound like I was blaming the charter, if you will, please allow me to correct myself. No, no, that wasn't it at all. But basically, that's why it comes into as a revenue to the general fund, as a, I believe we call a pilot in the revenues. And that's why it's also an expenditure in the general fund because that shows the electric division contribution being transferred out, if you will, or charged to the general fund, to the cap and non-recurring fund to do those projects.
I think as a member of that committee, I would request that perhaps we ask of you, is there anything that would, in charter revision, be helpful? Because you have an intelligent population here that asks questions, and I know some of it you answer as state statute, but I would request, Mr. Chairman, if there is anything that could help in the sense of how we handle the finances of our town based on charter, which as you say, there are newer accounting practices. I believe the last time the charter was updated was like 1989. I'm pretty sure that's the date on it. I guess I'm requesting of you that perhaps we should look at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chardullo, I see your hand. I just want to make sure that nobody else wants to comment on this before you get a second bite at the apple. Seeing none, Mr. Chardullo?
Paul Chardullo, 2 Bayberry Drive. I just wanted to try to add clarity again to what I was communicating earlier. Recall Mr. Boz's response about the fact that the pilot money from the electric division goes into the general fund, and then it gets transferred into the capital non-recurring fund. Okay? Now, that is an item, line item on this budget. If you look at the expense portion of the budget, that $2 million is part of the expense budget. So we're going to spend that for these projects, as I understand it. And that is actually justifying the tax increase. If you took that capital non-recurring department out of the expense budget, you wouldn't need a tax increase. It's tricky. You really have to think about it because we're moving money around. But the bottom line is, we have, we have a line item called capital non-recurring. Actually, it's a department, like a new department.
If I may interject, and I'm sorry for interrupting you before you go too far. There's also a revenue for the exact same amount.
Correct.
That's what you're not seem to hearing.
No, I'm hearing it.
Well, you're not hearing, because if you looked at the page eight or page nine where the pilot revenue is.
Right.
It's general fund revenue. You will see the same amount of revenue as in the expenditures. So it has no effect at all on the tax rate. It's a total wash.
No, but it...
It is a bookkeeping matter to comply with the charter only.
I'm agreeing. I don't disagree with that.
But you're not agreeing if you're saying that the $1.8 million is your tax increase. You're not agreeing.
No, no, no.
You're not, you're not getting something. I'm just trying to clarify it.
I hear you. All I'm saying is that we have the pilot money, which is a source of revenue, which is your point.
Correct.
Okay? It is, it initially comes into the general fund, according, according to your statement.
That's correct.
Revenue like everything else.
Correct.
This budget transfers that money into the cap non-recurring fund.
You're correct, as it has since 1961.
Understood.
Yep.
And that cap non-recurring fund is listed as a, as an expenditure in the expense budget, correct? You're going to spend that money.
In the cap and non-recurring bookkeeping fund.
Well, you're going to spend...
For those projects that are listed, yes.
Okay. You're going to spend two, approximately $2 million, right?
Correct.
And as I understand it, you're going to spend it for the first year, year one of your capital budget.
The year that's before the council.
That's correct.
Yep, you're correct.
This ordinance, what you're asking for now is you're asking the council to approve bonding for the same amount. And what I'm saying is, I don't believe you need that. It's just authorizing you to go out and get more money. I'm not saying that you're going to, you know, do anything devious about it. I'm just saying, it's not necessary, so don't approve it. That's all I'm saying. That's what's before the council right now.
I wasn't suggesting you were being devious.
Okay.
I was not suggesting you were being devious.
But let me make one other point, if I may.
Let's take a step back. The cap and non-recurring fund is just a bookkeeping fund that's outside of all of our other bookkeeping funds, including our general fund. And what the cap and non-recurring fund records is the transactions that are involved with the town's attempt to do some longer, maybe mid-range planning when it comes to its infrastructure. That's why the ordinance was written 50 some odd years ago. And what that does is, it basically puts forward what is called a six-year capital improvement plan. And the pilot revenue from the, from the electric division is one source of, of revenue to fund those projects, if you will.
Grants go into that?
The mechanism that we utilize, the charter states that the electric pilot be, come into the general fund, so it comes in as a revenue, and of course, we have to budget it as an expense on the other side. So it goes to the cap and non-recurring fund to keep it in balance, if you will.
Okay.
It sounds like we're saying the same thing.
We are, we're in total agreement. The only disagreement is, I don't think you need this bonding.
But you got me off track a little bit when you said it has something to do with the tax increase, and I, that's where I interjected, so...
Well, let me, on that issue, what I was trying to communicate there is if you removed the capital non-recurring, it's listed as a department under the expense.
That's correct, yeah.
You're going to spend that money.
We're going to send it, we're going to send that money to the cap and non-recurring fund. We're going to transfer it out.
Okay, and you're going to spend...
And it gets spent out of the cap and non-recurring.
And it's part of this year's budget, right?
Correct, correct.
So if you, if you turned around and said, okay, let's remove that from the budget...
From the expense budget.
From the expense budget.
Okay.
Let's let the electric division stay in the general fund.
Okay.
Let's authorize the bond, okay? We wouldn't need a tax increase. Because you just reduced the expense budget by $2 million. You would remove the tax portion of the income.
The mayor wants to try that.
This is really complicated, you, you know...
No, this, this is not complicated.
It's very complicated, sir. I beg to agree.
Let me help, let me help with it then.
All right.
Can we get rid of the capital non-recurring fund? Absolutely.
No, I'm not saying get rid of it.
Just please let me...
You're misunderstanding, you're misstating what I recommend.
But you're saying the money comes into the general fund. Leave it in the general fund. Don't have the capital program.
I didn't suggest that.
But I'm saying, that's $1.9 million that goes against the operating budget. At that point, what's the problem?
What do you mean, what's the problem?
We just did away with a, a capital program. So you're no longer that as a service, call it a department, a service. You no longer have that capital being spent for capital purposes. But the $1.9 million stays in the general fund and is added to revenue as if it's just against the mill rate. You could do that.
Sure.
But you're going to have fewer service in the town because you won't have that money for capital purposes. At that point, it goes against everything else that is in the general budget, which is a lot of operational cost, and you don't have a set aside that deals with capital needs only. So is that a, is that a policy issue? Yes. Early on, the town determined, we need a capital program that regardless of what happens on the general government side, we have a capital program that's funded out of the electric division. That should happen every year. An ordinance was adopted in order to see that it was funded in that way.
Right.
And those funds are used for capital purposes. If we no longer have that, we would not have that defined list of capital expenditures. You'd have $1.9 million to throw against the expenses on the general government side, and what would be missing in the future would be capital expenditures in the amount of $1.9 million or some portion of that, because at that point, all of it gets thrown against the mill rate.
Okay, well, first of all, I'm not, not suggesting that we eliminate the capital non-recurring fund. But secondarily, what I'm trying to do is to get back to the agenda item, which is what I'm addressing, not all these other factors you're talking about. And the agenda item is, you have asked to borrow $2.54 million in bonding. And the fact remains that that money sits in the expense budget that you're all looking at and that you're going to be asked to approve. So what you're going to do if you approve this bonding, is you're actually authorizing the town to spend $2.54 million to bond it, which is totally inappropriate. If the town needs to bond in six months or whatever, they can come back here in 10 minutes and, and present it. This is inappropriate. I know there's, apparently there's a disagreement, and I'll just leave it there, but it's erroneous, and it should not be approved. Thank you.
Any other comment from the public, Mr. Gross?
Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. Two follow-ups to Mr. Chardullo. Through the chair to the mayor. Mr. Mayor, are you saying then that you do not have, if you desired or the council desired, you do not have to spend the electric division money for a cap project? You can leave it in the general fund?
I think most probably the ordinance would have to be repealed, but...
Even if it wasn't repealed, what would happen?
I don't know that, I don't know that we could do that.
What would happen? What would be, what would be...
Well, I, I'm not going to deal with hypotheticals. If we want to get away from a capital program, we can do that. I don't think that's a good idea, and I think that would be a reduction in service to the community. But we could do that. And that's been attempted in the past. Take money from the electric division, use it against anything in, in the general fund. We had many battles over that, and that's basically the question being asked here. Should we take money from the utility, don't use it for, for capital purposes, and use it to offset the mill rate?
That's not what I...
Well, I don't agree with that.
That's not, I just asked if you did it, would Wallingford fall off the face of the earth? Could you do it?
Legally, it can be done.
Can or cannot?
Legally, it can be done. It's a choice the community makes as to how we budget and in what way we either responsibly or irresponsibly spend public money.
And just to, through the chair to the finance department, Mr. Boz, you said earlier, this, this gives us flexibility if we needed to have money down the road. But as Mr. Chardullo said, and I'm just following up with it, if a catastrophe happened and Wallingford needed to borrow $5 million down the road because something happened, would Wallingford be able, the credit ratings we had, would Wallingford be able to go into the secondary market and borrow whatever we'd need at a reasonable rate?
We'd be able to go on the bond market, yes.
All right, so again, either, you're going to either bond this, or why is it even on the agenda? Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Hearing none. I close the public hearing. Is there a motion in a second that the proposed ordinance appropriating $2,254,528 for the 2016-17 Capital Improvement Program and bond authorization be adopted? So moved. Is there a second?
Correct.
Seconded by Counselor Shortell. Discussion on the council, Mr. Testa, I thought you wanted to be heard. Was I correct?
Yes, you were. I apologize in advance. This will be lengthy. Well, maybe. There's a couple of things that need to be clarified, and I will keep this brief. There was, at one point, there was a time when I misunderstood the, the establishment and rules behind the electric division pilot and how it's used in the fund and all that other stuff, and said it was according to the charter. It's not. It's according to an ordinance. To make things very clear, the charter really doesn't, I wouldn't see a need for it to have to be altered. have to be altered, um, but some others might. It really stays pretty, pretty general. It just points out that the mayor, as part of his budget presentation annually, needs to present a five-year capital plan. I'm paraphrasing. That has to be done. Although I will say, this is something, Mr. Town Attorney, I, I just read that, it says, as part of the annual budget, blah, 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 the mayor shall present a program previously considered and acted upon by the town planning commission in accordance with general statutes concerning municipal improvements of proposed capital projects for the ensuing fiscal year and for the five fiscal years thereafter. In other words, that five-year capital plan in the budget, the way the cha, the charter reads it, that's supposed to be approved by the town planning commission, is it? So they do, right? Isn't that wonderful? Okay. Um, anyway, that's all it says about that. Then later on, in the, in section four of this chapter, um, it mentions that we, as a council, may, um, levy a tax, an additional tax on top of the budget of up to two mills, of, and that money would go into a fund known as the Capital Nonrecurring Expenditure Fund. And it says to be used solely to pay the cost of capital improvements for which the town is authorized to issue bonds. So if you wanted to say, what can we use that fund for? It can only be used for items that you could bond, and that we've used as a guiding principle. Uh, and then there's a little bit else, but it really doesn't, isn't relevant to the discussions we've been having. The ordinance establishing a reserve fund, um, I'm not gonna read it, but it basically says that there will be a reserve fund for capital nonrecurring expenditures established in accordance with state statutes and according to the provisions of the charter. There are various sources of funds. We could just transfer money from the general fund into it if we wanted to. Uh, we could raise a, another, another tax. Surplus money. Already held in reserve. Um, another amount of money from the general fund, not to exceed two mills. And then there's the paragraph explaining the amount of money from the, uh, electric division's revenue. So that, that, the electric division contribution to this is, is by ordinance. The establishment of the fund is in accordance with the charter, but if we were to decide to make changes to how this fund is established, structured, utilized, et cetera, it would require work on the ordinance. It would not require charter revision, and that's something we should keep in mind. So what, sometimes we do say, oh, we, it's the charter, and once we say it's the charter, it's time to move on. So no, we could take this up as an ordinance. So that's the story with that, with the money. My question is this, because I've, I've always understood, I've always had, I've had this question frequently, when we've had these bonding ordinances related to the capital fund, and it is always my understanding that because we are, um, undertaking an expenditure that could be authorized for bonding, even if we're going to be using the money in the fund, we still have to go through the procedure of doing the bot ordinance, for lack of a better term, as a formality, with, because we very well may not even do the bond, but in case, I'm assuming that this was set up this way, because in case we use the money for something else, we've already made the commitment to do the project, and we have the bonding ordinance available, so we can go get the money by bonding it if we have to. Or we may need the money right now, and we bond it, we pay ourselves back very quickly. I've heard a lot of different comments over the years, but my understanding was, the bonding ordinance is a, is a formality to, to keep up with all the statutes and legalities of, of the, uh, ordinance, et cetera. So and having said that, it was my underst, it's my understanding that this work is going to be paid for by, or this was my understanding, was going to be paid for by the money in the capital recurring fund, and we are not. And now I'm hearing tonight, we may actually be issuing these bonds, so am I right in saying it's a formality? We're not gonna really issue the bonds, but we have to do this in order to be able to spend that money because that's the way it's set up.
Correct.
Thank you.
Sitting here tonight, there is no plan to issue bonds for those projects.
I believe a little while ago, there were people that were under the understanding, we're gonna go get $2.2 million in bonds, and then what the heck are we gonna do with the $2.2 in the capital fund? And I think, I thought that there was that misunderstanding, and I wanted that clarified. We are not actually gonna bond this money. We are authorizing ourselves to bond this money, which allows us to spend the money from the reserve fund, because that's the way it has to be done. Yes? Fabulous. Thank you.
Thank you for the dissertation. It's actually very constructive. Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Right, I enjoy the, the explanation, but I think what we give up is a little bit of control. It seems to be a formality. The money's gonna be there anyway. I still don't, I don't understand why we need to authorize the whole thing. They're looking for a cushion to get off the ground. Maybe a portion is appropriate. You know, begs the question, if the bonds are actually issued, does anybody have to come back to us? And the answer's in the negative. Because once we authorize it, we authorize it. We never necessarily find out whether it actually happens, and while there might not be any, be any intent, intent here tonight to issue the bonds, um, it very well might happen, and we'll never know about it unless we dig far enough. So, I don't know. I, I just, I don't see that it's necessary to authorize the full amount. I haven't been convinced, so. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments from the council? Uh, Mayor?
Some of the projects are awaiting federal funds. If, if we have to front the money, then it becomes a question of which ones and when. There's a lot of timing factors that come into play. I, I would say usually we aren't bonding, but that, that flexibility is important for us to be able to initiate something and see it through to a conclusion.
If I, if I may, Mayor, you know, because I'm, I'm willing to be convinced, can you identify, because I think it's 1.3 million of the 2.2 million is roads, are roads, that we're doing. So can you identify the federal project that we're waiting for money?
Wait, two? There's 2.2, but, uh, there's 400. 750,000 of that is, 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 uh, it's probably an asterisk that show on that listing.
West State and Hill Dam.
Where state funds or, or other funding comes in, and it creates a lot of timing issues, and we need to enter into contracts, know that we can move ahead, uh, that money might not come back and reimburse us right away. I mean, there's, there's a lot of issues that you can't plan for, but we, we need the flexibility to move ahead with, uh, with everything at the same time and, and be ready for bidding purposes.
So it's, uh, it's that one item, the West State and Hill Dam, which I think is the total expenditure of $750,000, we're going to get half of that back from the state? That's the one that is imperiled here?
Uh, that, that, that may be on this one, but, uh, other years have been other projects. I mean, it's, there's always those types of issues, and all of this, this is, is allowing flexibility for the finance department. If we don't trust the finance department to properly handle the funding, what, I mean, then we're in a world of trouble.
Well, and, and as I said, I'm open to being convinced. I haven't been. I mean, I got it on the 750, I, I don't know.
I would ask, what, what has gone wrong with the program? It's been an effective program. We've had projects finished, uh, and I understand you want to be convinced, but part of that is experience. What is the record? Record is not fraught with problems and stopping projects, and we didn't have the money and all this kind of stuff. I think it's been a, a good program, and it's effectively managed by the finance department. If we had a record of troublesome financing issues and uncertainties about who was doing what, and then that would be a different thing, but we don't have that.
We, we talk all the time about how the world has changed, the economy is different. My first year up here, about six years ago, I kept on hearing from the chairs over there because that's the way we've always done it. We're gonna continue to do it because that's the way we've always done it, and that seems to be what I'm hearing here tonight. We've always done it this way, it's never, we've never had a problem, so let's continue doing it. Well, I sit up here remaining unconvinced.
But there's not a change to the basics of initiating a project, putting it out to bid, and ultimately having the work done. There, there's not a change in that.
You're saying?
There may be less money to pay for such projects, but there's no change in the process of taking something from an idea to a finished construction. There's no change in that.
I, I understand, that's what we're dealing with.
So we're dealing with a process that hasn't changed at all, and it seems to be working well. So why change that if it's working well?
I don't know that it is working well, but, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other, other comments from the council? There being none. Please call the roll.
Certainly. Fishbein?
No.
Laffin?
Yes.
Laterno?
No.
Marone?
Yes.
Shortell?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
No.
Chairman Savoni?
Yes.
The ordinance passes.
Thank you. Onto item nine. Adoption of the budgets for 2016, 2017. Is there a motion to move the budget as amended? So moved. Second.
Mr. Bose, in, in order to, um, pass the budget as amended, are, are those motions sufficient? They don't resemble what we've done in the past.
Well, we've, we've sent out the motions, uh, through the town clerk's office to you folks, uh, I believe last Thursday.
Yep.
With regards, uh, and including, incorporating the changes made, uh, by the council at their motions meeting last Wednesday night. So, the motions, as they're written, item one through item nine numerically, Roman numerically, I guess I should say, which I believe have all been sent to you, uh, include those changes or updates.
Okay.
So I think if someone would just read those motions, if they agreed with those changes Wednesday night, especially item one, two, and three, those are the changes that primarily affect, that, those are the, the items that are affected by last year, uh, last week's changes.
Okay. I don't believe we yet have an appropriate motion on the table to move the budget as amended at our meeting Wednesday night.
I would read, I would read item one just as it is, it's printed, if.
If someone is inclined to move.
If someone is inclined to do so, correct. I'm sorry, I didn't, not trying to take the place of a council member.
Counselor Laffin?
Thank you. Mr. Bose and the mayor, what would happen if the budget didn't receive five votes?
What was the question again? I, I.
What would happen if the budget, the amended budget did not receive five votes? A majority?
Then the budget would revert to the, the mayor's budget, the mayor's proposed budget of April 1 or March 31st, whenever that.
Okay.
Budget was released.
And then I saw in the news that the state released some budget numbers and stuff today to that. Do we have any update from that? As far as, for this current year or next year?
We have no updates.
Okay.
Through, uh, what was, um, communicated to you folks, uh, for your meeting last Wednesday night. As a matter of fact, it was confirmation, uh, late this afternoon from, uh, the assemblies budget, which, uh, when I added the numbers up, they are exactly the numbers that we gave to you. There's a couple hundred dollars difference, literally, so, for all intents and purposes. However, they put a big proviso on that. That's as of today. Okay? And it is before they develop what is called the implementer bills, which then takes the total state allocation for all the state-funded programs, and then do their recompute, recomputations for all the municipalities. So, as it stands now, we have nothing new to share with you other than that.
The Hartford Current had an article, uh, that indicated Wallingford, named a couple of towns, Wallingford would receive 1.2 million less, which would be a somewhat more than what the earlier figure was, so it's, it's very much in limbo.
Okay. Connecticut is not gonna give us the money we thought we were getting this year, not next year, this year. It's, when we talk about the rainy day fund, it's raining in Wallingford now, not raining on the vacation we're planning in a couple months next year, it's raining right now. That's what we need to look at the surplus money for, how to handle this year. I don't support spending any of the surplus or savings on a projected or future planned budget. Each year, I fight my budget battles, and when I lose them, I typically move along and accept the majority of the council's decision and, and vote with and for the budget. But this year's different. I can't cross that line, a line that I've stated and I've argued against since before I was on the council, and every year that I've been on the council, is spending nonrecurring funding for recurring expenses. I just believe it flies in the face of the economic principles and practices that have successfully governed, not politic, governed this town in the past several years, few decades, in what is nationally accepted as a failing state. And that is why, you know, contrary to what the, the vice chair typically does at these meetings, making the motions, I, I, I won't make any of the motions, and I, I just can't support the budget as we've amended it.
Counselor Zandry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Bose, in, in prior years, we, we've sat up here and been told there were state funds at risk in current years and future budgets. Have we ever not received any monies? In other words, there may have been years we were projected to get 2 million, we got 1.2, there may have been years we got the entire thing. Has there ever been a year we've gotten zeroed out?
Zeroed out totally? To my knowledge and recollection, no. There have been reductions, yes, like you said.
Yes, there's been reductions, so.
Zeroed out totally, no.
All right, so then, that, that adds to my next question. So, whatever the budget is set to tonight or any other night, when some of the funds release, whether it's 500,000, a million, or the entire amount, it gets placed into the general fund because it doesn't have a line item to go into, isn't that correct?
You mean if a budget, if, if a revenue were zero?
So let, I'll use the example. Let's say we pass a budget that removes the 1.9 shortfall we're expecting for next year, the budget we're voting on, and it shows up, the monies end up showing up. Because it's got no place to go, it ends up being deposited, for lack of a better term, into the general fund. Is that not correct?
It's recorded in the general fund, that's correct.
All right, so.
And, and it would show up as a, obviously a positive variance for that grant program.
So, so the question was asked, what happens if this amended budget doesn't pass? And, and I've already asked this privately, so it, it's 100% correct. The, the, the council amended budget from last week doesn't pass, the original mayor's budget passes as proposed. Now what is that budget? That budget is 158,000,000.27, as opposed to last year's 155.73. That is 1.65% more than it was the prior time. Inflation for 2015 was 1/10 of a percent, 1/10. The cost of living adjustment for seniors was zero. If this budget amended doesn't pass, the entire 1.65% increase is gonna go on to every taxpayer in this town. What does that mean? What that means for a median household in the town? And Mr. Bose, please correct me if I have my numbers wrong. We're gonna have to change the mill rate by half a mil, so we can bring $2 million more into this budget. In order to do that, that's approximately $100 more in taxes for each median-priced home. But it's not just 100 bucks. It's a little bit more on your car taxes. That's how it affects the homeowner. It's also going to affect the homeowner because revaluations came in, and most residential revaluations went down. But the budget's increasing 1.65%, so we have to make that up, and that means it's going on commercial industrial. So while you're paying 100, 100 and. So while you're paying 100, 110 more dollars out on your tax bill, the businesses and industry of this town are going to get hit harder. So your coffee's going to be five cents more, your sandwich is going to be 50 cents more. It's going to add up all year long. The changes we proposed were only to the surplus from one year. These were taxes already paid by the people of this town, the people that live here, the people that can vote, and even some business owners who simply set up shop here. They may not even live here, they don't even get the opportunity to vote. We're not talking about this being a long-term, ongoing solution year in and year out. We're talking about a stopgap in a year when things are bad. When inflation is one tenth of a percent and Social Security has gone zero, gone up 0%, that is a year that we need to hold the line. If we couldn't do it on the expense side, we need to look at taxes already paid by the people that live here, while they still live here, before they pass away, before they move to Florida. I am not advocating this type of action every single year because it would be the wrong thing to do. I am advocating it this year. Thank you.
Any other comments from the council? Counselor Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Throughout the budget workshops, I think I pointed out places in this budget that I just see spending that shouldn't happen. And, you know, the, the mayor and I argue about whether or not somebody said something or the representation and, you know, we can agree to disagree, but I'm just, don't think that this budget is the stripped-down budget that one would have us believe. We still don't have the backup from all of these nonprofits that ask for money. You know, we can complain, the mayor can complain about infrastructure and money for things that we own, we give out money to nonprofits that, nobody holds them accountable. How much money do they have in the bank? What are their reserves? What's the money going to be used for? What's the impact on the agency or group if they don't get the money? I still see it in this budget. My no vote tonight is not as a result of the other night, it's as a result of this budget. When I, I look at our downtown, I look at Wood and Kaplan, property that we own, and it's absolutely atrocious, and yet we're giving out money with no accountability. I'm ashamed, and I can't support this budget. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Chertel?
Caught me off guard, Chairman. Well, I'm not voting for this budget either as amended, but I'm appreciative of the discussion. I'm appreciative of, of what Counselors Zandry proposed last week, and my mind is always open, at least I try to be open on these things. There's a great quote from Thomas Aquinas, presumption is the mother of error. And I think a modern way to look at that is there are no sacred cows, and that's how I would approach this budget. So by saying there are no sacred cows, the surplus is not a sacred cow, but neither is the Board of Ed, neither are the fire, neither are the police. I don't see this amended budget in that light, though. So I'm appreciative of the dialogue, appreciative of the opportunity to, to vote on it and discuss it, and look at the philosophy behind it, but I can't support it as amended. You know, if, if, if the mayor's, I'm not going to call them cuts because they weren't cuts, they're just reductions in the increase. If the mayor's reductions in the proposed increase from late April were put back in, I would be open to voting for that and then balancing the rest from the surplus and then having a zero tax increase. That would be something I'd be open to, which I'm sure would please nobody. So that's where I am on this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Marone?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, my chief concern here is just sustainability and how do we move the town forward and maintain the services that we have? And so what we did at the last meeting is the mayor came to us with potential reductions, which we then rejected, and then we decided to take the money that we didn't have, that we, we knew we weren't going to raise in taxes, and we were going to take it from the surplus. And I just think that, well, I think it's an excellent discussion to have, I think it's a short-sighted solution because there's only so many times we're going to be able to take the money from the surplus until we whittle down the surplus, and then, then what do you do? You know, and it's funny because my colleague to my right, who I respect very much, talks about a stripped-down budget, and yet he voted to add many of these items back to the budget. So I don't really understand your perspective. So in terms of sustainability, you know, I, I think we need to look for reductions everywhere we can. I've heard the public speak frequently about reductions. We had them in front of us and then we rejected them. So for that reason, I can't support this budget. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
We, we've heard talk about, about opportunities to save money, about preserving services while saving money. You know, one, one of the things that has to be on your mind as you consider a budget like, a municipal budget, are the fact that you are dealing with scheduled increases in income as a result of union contracts. Therefore, that being the biggest source of your increase, the only way to save money is to limit personnel. If you're not reducing the number of personnel, but keeping them and abiding by union contracts, your limit is to the ways that you can cut spending. We can cut one-time expenditures, the mayor proposed that last week, we considered it, it didn't pass. But if you use the surplus as a method of staying off a tax increase for one year, and you're not eliminating positions or otherwise making drastic cuts in the next year, then in the next year, you face an increase in expenses that's either going to require you to dip again into that dwindling surplus, or get it twice from the taxpayers. My concern about dipping into the surplus to such a great extent is that you're staying off a marginal increase for one year, and you're serving the taxpayer with twice that increase in the following year. It's the beginning of deficit spending, and I can't responsibly support that as part of a budget here in Wallingford. I understand that Counselor Zandry and Counselor Testa, you want to be heard?
Well, I want to allow everybody to have their, their say, those that want it, but I want to be able to, to move the motion so that we can vote this thing. But I'm not going to preempt anybody that wants to speak, obviously.
If you move, we'll, we'll have discussions under the motion.
That's, that's fine if you'd like me to, to begin.
Go ahead.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we adopt the total general fund revenue budget of 1 million, 158 million, 250,000, 163 dollars per the changes made to the mayor's proposed budget on the attached reconciliation detail sheet for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2016.
It was seconded by Counselor Testa. All right, discussion on the council, on the motion, Counselor Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just find it necessary to respond to Counselor Marone's comment. I, I just want to get a little bit deeper into the cuts or the proposed cuts of the other night. You know, on April 1, the mayor came to us and he said, you know, here's the book. I think that the anticipated expenditures, expenditures in there are reasonable and necessary to sustain our government. A month later, he comes to us, you know, based upon a projection from the state, and all of a sudden, some things are not reasonable and necessary. So by way of example, and this is just from my memory, we had the excavator. The excavator was a $380,000 expenditure coming from the CRA funds. Reasonable and necessary, April 1, somehow not necessary at the end of April. We're going to replace it with a dump truck, a dump truck and I think a payloader, which is not going to reach $380,000. In the CRA fund remaining after all of the expenditures that are in the budget, there's 3.5 million dollars. That's separate and apart from the reserves. Reasonable and necessary, all of a sudden within, within 30 days, but you still have the money. Doesn't affect the taxes, it's still the CRA money. Could have been done, but the mayor proposed to cut it. I just, it doesn't make sense to me. The tasers, the police department, public safety comes to us and they say, you know, we need this for public safety. Reasonable and necessary. It's 27,500 expenditure. Still got the CRA money, arguable whether or not you could use it for it. Well, you could, but the mayor's proposing to cut it. What would happen at the end of the year is we'd have a surplus, let's say this year, and they'll say, well, that stuff that we cut, we're actually going to do it now that we have a surplus. That's what would happen. And that's the system. I also asked the other night, now we're in May, what is your projected surplus for this year? And the answer was, we don't know. I don't know. You know, within the next month, two months maybe, we're going to be seeing some expenditures that we might buy forward, perhaps with a surplus. I think I've seen it every year that I've been up here. Then we come to the Board of Ed, and, you know, I thi, I think the Board of Ed was overfunded last year, and I voted against. But when the mayor comes to us with his budget, the Board of Ed asks for a certain amount of money, and then he goes through the lines and he reduces them and it adds up to something. Fine, that's what the mayor's recommending. But last week, what we had before us was just cut 500 dollars, or 500,000 dollars. He didn't say where it's going to come from, what's the impact. Granted, it's on the Board of Ed to determine where it's going to be spent or not, but under the strong mayor form of government, we, we rely a lot on the mayor to present that information. We didn't get it. You know, based upon all of that, I'm not going to go into the other cuts that were, you know, minimal, but they, they didn't pass. And one of them happened anyway because a, a bid for the ambulance came in cheaper. So it was a nullity. You know, from the beginning, last week not even happening, this budget, I just don't think is a good budget. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Testa, forgive me for skipping it.
Oh, not at all. Gave me some more time to gather my thoughts.
Well, then I retract my apology.
Yeah. I need another hour. I pretty much can see where we're going here. I've, I mean, I think you're 11, 11 or 12, I don't remember. I've been here a while, gone through a lot of budgets, and on a number of occasions over the years, I've made the argument regarding, about the philosophy of using the town's bank account, reserve fund, call it whatever you want, you know, there's 27 million dollars or something there. I'm, I'm fully in agreement that it is not wise as a policy and a general practice to use savings to fund operational expenses. As a practice, it's an ongoing thing to rely upon. In years past, when I've suggested we use a portion of the reserves into, in the budget, I was very quickly, my idea was very quickly compared to California and all these other places that are, you know, went off the deep end, without mentioning the fact that they did all that because they went out and bonded and borrowed money to put money in their pension fund, not to mention God knows what else they did. I mean, not even close to what we were proposing here, but enough of a, of a nightmare scenario to go, ooh, and scare everybody, but not even close. A few facts remain. There is, and there always has been, a allocation in the budget for money from that fund. We can argue all night long what happens to it, it comes in the budget, it goes back out of the budget, it goes in the budget back, but there's money in there every year. And if the principle was we should never do it, then that 4 million dollars shouldn't even be in the budget. That should be 4, 4 million dollars in extra taxes. So the argument that on principle it's a bad thing is, is, is a red herring. The only thing that we could argue about is the, is the extent to which we utilize our, our, our savings, if you will, for, for expenses that we have. Do I think it's a good idea to take a million dollars out and, and, and hire five people? Of course not. But there is and always will be a large chunk in our budget, which is for one-time expenses. How you put it in here, how you allocate it is bookkeeping. As we hear on a monthly, on a weekly basis, oh, it's bookkeeping, it's this, it's booking. But you know as well as I do, there's what we have to spend money on and how much money we have. Where are we going to get it from? What are we going to do with it? There's a lot of things we have to buy, one-time expenses. There are a lot of things we need to do that are one-time expenses. I just, a little while back, very eloquently, am I right? Explained the, the, I want to keep it light, right? The ordinance, in our own ordinance, that our esteemed founding fathers and our charter, our esteemed founding fathers and mothers, you know, put together, have, they have provisions by which we can allocate money from all different sources for capital expenses. We can take money out of the general fund anytime we want, up to two mils, three ways. We can tax another two mils. We could take money out of the general fund for two mil, worth, up to two mils. We can take the reserve money that keeps going back into the budget, which is what he wants to use, up to two mils. We do a lot of things, and none of it, and, and no one has ever accused the people who put together the charter and this ordinance of being irresponsible. On the, on the contrary, they are referred to reverently as the people we should not, you know, contradict. So all we're saying this year, and what, what I see is, and I don't mean in an insulting way, what I see here is, is a lot of misunderstanding and potentially fear. When the mayor says this, that, or the other, everybody gets nervous and, mm, we can't do that, we can't do that. Well, yes, we can do that. We can do that. It's our job to do that if we think it's necessary responsibly. So we have a, a number of things that we believe are very important and have to be funded in this budget. We've had the discussions, we've talked about it, we've got the Board of Education, which has gone over it more times than they care to, to, to do, and narrowed it down. And I, I don't think anybody would suggest that the Board of Education budget is frivolous in any way, shape, or form. Okay? Our job is to say, can we give you everything you really think you need, or can we not? Can we give the departments everything we think they need or can we not? And what's it going to cost the taxpayer? And many taxpayers have repeatedly been saying, man, you, you know, you're raising my taxes, why are you raising my taxes? I'm a Democrat, I typically don't say, I, you know, I agree with you, I say, it's what we have to do. Joking again about being a Democrat, but we, our tax increases have been, have been minimal. I go along with them. I'm not in favor of raising a bunch of taxes to spend a lot of extra money. But we had 2 million dollars extra last year. Nobody is suggesting we, we are, we spend down the reserve fund. All we are suggesting this year is let's not add to it as we have every year. We had 2 million dollars extra last year. Congratulations on, on conservative budgeting and on controlling the expenditures. Our real issue with having surpluses and not having enough money to fund this and having to raise taxes is about budgeting, the way we budget, and that's a, a discussion for another day. We have the ability to make the changes that Counselor Zandry proposed with money that we have that was left over from last year. I don't care where it was put and what it was allocated to, we have it, we know where we got it. We took 2 million dollars more than we spent, took 2 million dollars more than we needed. So what can we do with it? There's a lot of taxpayers that say, I want it back. Here's one way you can give it back. Apply it to this year's budget. Don't take anything else out of the reserve fund. Don't fund operating expenses with savings account, don't. And don't put that, don't make that, those my words, because that's not what I'm suggesting. Let's just not add 2 more million dollars to the budget, to the fund, and let's apply it to this year's it to this year's budget so that we can give that money back to the taxpayer this year. You want to not use it for operating expenses? Don't. We can sit here one night, go through all the items and say, make sure it's used for a capital expense. And then, the other argument, and I agree with this one, is that if you use reserves for operating expenses, next year, you have raised your budget from $5 to $6, next year you got to make up that extra dollar before you can even go from $6 to $7. I know that. So let's budget better. Let's do what we talked about two years ago, three years ago. Let's get on the ball and start looking at the capital expenditures and start doing some more responsible bonding of large-scale capital expenditures, expenditures, so that the $2 million we add this year, doesn't have to be made up again next year. We'll spend it on capital expenses and then get more responsible with the way we budget and fund ongoing capital expenditures. But once in a while, you can say, it is raining, man, and we got a lot of extra money. And let's not go off and spend like crazy kids. Look, come on. We put $2 million extra, let's use that. Give it back to the taxpayer, lower the tax, the tax impact of this year's budget, and give the Board of Education what they want, what they need, what they've said they can whittle down to, because it's not necessary to be that hardcore this year. Thank you very much.
Certainly. Counselor Sullivan.
I don't know what left there is to say after that, Vinnie. That was well stated. I was, and I think most of us were, satisfied with the mayor's original proposal, this big fat book sitting in front of us. There were no changes to any of the line items. Everybody was funded. I feel satisfactorily. But the concern is around state funding and the money that we could lose. And I get that. We know the state's not doing well right now. Some of the projections that I got from our state representatives right now tell me we're going to receive about $384,000 less than we did last year. Again, those are projections. There's proposals, they're being worked on at the Capitol. There's no number right now. But I think if we leave here tonight, and we're still working for the fiscal year 2016, 2017 with the mayor's original proposal, I think we're going to be in good shape. I really do. And when the state money comes in, and Jim, I'll ask you this, that money will go into the general fund, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So even if we use this surplus, we're still going to be padding the general fund with state money that cannot be just moved back to those line items that they were initially earmarked for. To Counselor Testa's point, the taxpayers do deserve a break. And to my colleagues to the left, they're right as well. You can't budget year to year using surpluses. It's just not the way to budget. Counselor Testa gave you all the numbers already, so I'm not going to repeat them. But I happen to agree with his philosophy and his thoughts on this. I want to make sure our school system is adequately funded. I want to make sure Chief Wright has tasers for his officers. Those are things that are very important to me as a counselor. And the people who voted me into office feel the same way. There are those that feel the school system is overfunded. Well, they have to explain that to me, how? Because no one's presented an argument to me so far, and I'm not speaking to my colleagues on the council, but anybody, that they're overfunded. So tonight, I'm going to support passing this budget as it was amended last week. And I'm going to vote to support the taxpayers, this budget. We don't know what's going to happen in the years to come. And I'm in agreement with the mayor that the state is definitely facing hard times, definitely facing hard times. I think we're going to get funding. I think it will be cut basically about the number I gave you earlier, about $384,000. But in years to come, I think it's going to be even more. And the valves are going to slowly start turning. We do need to find some way to be more efficient with town government, find different ways. We can raise productivity and efficiency. I think Mr. Kennedy brought up a few items that I happen to agree with, being in probably some of the same circles he was when he was working on efficiency and productivity process. So for those reasons tonight, I'm going to support this. And I think we're going to be okay. That's how the unaffiliated people feel. I can't speak for my Republican or Democratic colleagues up here, but I caucused with myself this afternoon. And that's what I came up with. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for stopping there. Counselor Chertel.
Well, I'm not going to say the school system's overfunded. I'm just going to say this. Two years ago tonight, at this very meeting, Mayor Dickinson had reduced, not at the meeting, but he'd reduced, I think it was $525,000, $100,000 out of the proposed Board of Ed budget. And the town council at that time overrode that and put it back in. 14 months later, I was on the Board of Ed at that point, when the fiscal year closed, the Board of Ed had a surplus just under $800,000. So if there are taxpayers out there who think the school boards are overfunded, that's where they get it from. I'm not saying it was the wrong thing to do, I'm just pointing that out. This year, according to Ms. Winters, the business manager, they're having, they're running a $1.5 million surplus. I think they've spent some of that down. Again, so I'm just, let's just try to add some balance. Just want to make those comments. Thank you.
Counselor Letourneau.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know I'm the last up, and I know everything has been said, but not by all. A wise man once told me that. This is my ninth budget, and by far, this has been the most robust discussion that I can remember on a budget. We have covered a lot of issues, a lot of good issues. We got in-depth in the budget. I agree with a lot of my colleagues on both sides. I think we need to do it better. How do we do that? It's going to take some work. I think we need to not look at our budget once a year, but we're going to have to look at it throughout the year. We're going to have to spend more time really getting into every department, not micromanaging, but we need to know, get a better handle on the information that are in these books. We get them once a year, and we get scant backup for this. So, that being said, I think we need to look at that. The budget proposed tonight, I am going to vote yes for this. And I don't look at this as a Democratic proposal, or an independent proposal, unaffiliated, yeah, whatever. And, the, or a Republican. What I look at this as, what is good for the people of Wallingford? And I commend Mr. Zandry for coming up with this proposal. And from what I see, it's a workable, it's workable. We won't know until we do it and it's tried. I also agree that we can't tap into the reserves every year. That's been said numerous times. But I think on this particular occasion, we can. Nine years sitting up here, I've heard nine years of, we got to put money away for the rainy day. We've got to have a rainy day fund. Well, it's pouring. This is the year that it's pouring. It's starting to pour. And is it going to get worse? Yeah. I mean, I don't have a crystal ball, and I don't think anybody up here has a crystal ball. But what we could see from what our illustrious legislators are doing up in Hartford, we're in trouble. We're in big trouble. And that's going to equate back to town. One thing they do up there, they say, we don't raise your taxes. We didn't raise your taxes. No, but they give it to us to do. So we have to find creative ways. And it's going to take a lot of creative ways throughout the whole year. So next year, when we sit up here, we're a little better prepared. So, I'm going to end, like I said, I am going to vote yes on this because I believe it is, it is workable, it is doable. And I just hope that we can do better for next year with more, with better information and work on this throughout the entire year. Thank you.
Any other comments from the council? Counselor Zandry.
I just wanted to add one quick follow-up because it was discussed about, you know, the current open budget, which hasn't closed, we haven't been able to get any updates, sound updates on what our surpluses might be, and what may or may not be cut from the state. I've sat up here prior, and I sat up here this year, there wasn't one time this year that Public Works came in front of us for a transfer for overtime because we didn't need it, because we had such a mild winter. I want to remind everybody that the cost of oil went from $62 a barrel to $31 a barrel in that same year. So not only did we use less fuel, supplies, materials, and overtime, but the cost of that fuel was cut in half by a drop in price. It wouldn't surprise me at all, between the very careful spending and budgeting that we do do, and the cushion that we automatically supply in all of our estimates, doesn't just multiply the fact that costs came down on these things, we could very easily see the same $2 or $3 million surplus out again. I don't believe we have the votes up here to pass this budget, but I'm glad we brought up the proposal, I'm glad we had the discussion, and I'm glad to be standing on this side of the vote. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments from the council? Mayor, at one point, we were discussing what might happen to the funding from the state that we were relying on for this budget year. My understanding was that that money was in jeopardy, about a similar amount of money, I think it was about $1.8 or $1.9 million. Is that money still in jeopardy or not?
As far as I know, we will not receive the so-called MRSA funds, it was $1.9 million. The Finance Committee voted to not have that go to the Bond Commission for funding this year. The total was some $60 million that shared amongst towns, and we were scheduled for $1.9, and we will, at this point, we will not receive that for the current year.
So that's $1.9 million that we budgeted on last year for the current year's budget that's, we don't have coming in. Thank you. Comments from the public? Mrs. Morgenstein.
Gina Morgenstein, South Main Street. I want to commend the yes votes and try to convince the noes to be yeses. We are looking at the health of our town, obviously. Within this town are the people of this town. When the state is making its cuts, and when the state is laying off people, these are human beings that live in this town. So that tax increase is a budget of a homeowner that could well mean the difference between fuel, oil, and the tank. People talk an awful lot about the takers and all the inequality. It's the working people that live within their means or at the edge of their means, and all it takes is $100 in the tax bill that might mean a difference between filling a prescription. Your seniors that got no increase, your people that are losing their jobs, the people whose companies are moving out of this state and are having to decide between moving out of the state or staying and trying to find something new. Mr. Fishbein, the whole budget every year seems to be too much fluff, I can't vote yes for it. Will we repair our roads? Will we send our children to school? Fluff? It's not fluff when it's your family or when it's yourself that needs to drive down that road. We are a people who pride ourselves on taking care of our own families, but our family is also this community. I think if we can get a five to four yes, we still will not pass this budget because the mayor will override it. What we need is a seven to two, and I ask you men to please consider that. Thank you.
Mr. Chardulo, I saw your hand earlier. Oh, Mr. Zandry.
Gina Zandry, Nine Balls from Red Circle. I would like to see you all vote yes on the amended budget this evening. You know, you're talking about those that are saying they're going to vote no because you say you're comfortable with what the mayor proposed. But in the mayor's budget, there's a line item that transfers money from the savings fund to balance the budget. The question here is what the amount that, amount should be. In the mayor's budget, it's $4.2 million. All you're doing is changing that amount. The philosophy is still there. The argument is, how much should that line item be? I think the people of Wallingford deserve a break this year. You don't have to, this is not going to affect next year. Next year, you got a brand-new budget, all, everything's on the table again. If cuts have to be made, make them next year. But at least this year, you're giving the people a break. And your philosophy, you got to think about it, the transfer is already in the mayor's budget, the question is what the amount should be. All we're asking is to increase that amount so there's no tax increase this year and give everybody in this town a deserved break. It's their money anyways, it's been, they've paid taxes on it to build up that fund over the years. All we're saying is, this year, we want to have a break. So think about it. I mean, it's, next year's budget, next year's budget, you'll deal with it next year. But at least this year, you can tell everybody in town, there's not going to be a tax increase and give everybody a break. Thank you.
Paul Chardulo, Tubay Berry Drive. An outstanding point that Mr. Zandry just made, I'd like to reinforce that as well. I'm up here tonight as a taxpayer, okay? And I start from a point of view that the first meeting I ever went to was the library meeting when we voted to approve the library. I don't know how many years ago that was, 12 years, 13 years. We've raised taxes every year since then, through the worst economic recession in the history of our country, and we're still not out of it. Many of the points that the mayor made in his introduction are right on about the impact on individuals, in particular seniors, in terms of their, not only their income, but their, the loss of value of their, their most important asset, which is their home. So, I just think that we're out of balance in this town, for whatever reason. And we don't give enough consideration for the taxpayer who's providing the funds to manage this wonderful town. And this is an opportunity to give them a small break for one year. Is it a big deal? Yes, I think it is a big deal. Because even though it's $100, the way I look at it is, I look at it in 10-year increments. It's really $1,000. You give them a tax break... You give them a tax break this year, it's gonna recur every year, all right? And that's a good thing. The town has plenty of funds. You can go and look at the audit report, and you'll see it there, in terms of the fund balance, the CRA fund, the Capital Non-Recurring Fund. So I support this motion, I think. Now, having said that, I'm not saying that there's not room to reduce the cost in the town, but I think this issue is an overriding issue. There's a lot of things that we could and should be doing in the town that we're not doing, but that, and that needs to be taken care of. So this is just a small step in the direction that we need to be going in. And I'll close by saying one other thing. I'm very disappointed in the Republican Party of the town of Wallingford. Because, you know, it's a party whose mantra is fiscal conservatism, small government, low taxes. And I gotta say, on all three counts, our party here, our Republican Party here in Wallingford doesn't even come close to those three. You control the council, you control the mayoralship, and I think you should rethink some of your positions. Thank you.
Serge Mahaly, 70, South Wind Drive. As I'm sitting here, this is obviously a very difficult vote, and what I'm seeing is two parties and two groups of people that are trying to do the right thing. We have one group that wants to cut taxes, which everybody would want to do, and on the other side, people are faced with the fact that this is gonna get even worse. And we're talking about so-called republican government. Well, this is called fiscal conservatism. This is looking at things with a long term. We may have a certain amount of money now that you can cut taxes with, but next year, somebody mentioned we may have even more. But if we have more next year, I would tend to think that the deficit at the state level is gonna be even worse. They're talking about a 1 to 4 billion, that's with a B, deficit at the state level. I'm astounded. I don't know, I don't know how the state of Connecticut got this way, except for excessive spending and fiscal irresponsibility. That's not the Republican Party. That's the ruling Democratic Party in Hartford. So I have to commend both sides here, and I see sincerity in both groups. But like I said last week, we have to, as far as I'm concerned, be as conservative as possible. Do not raise anything. I wouldn't raise money for the tasers. Nobody's gonna die if you don't have a taser. You're gonna have excellent education with excellent teachers, even if you don't raise the budget for education. I was a teacher for 10 years in several different school systems. I know what it's like to be in the classroom, and I know there are funds left over in a lot of different places. So just wanted to say, I think, that five votes I agree with, but also want to commend everybody up there for doing a sincerely difficult job, and I think the people of Wallingford should be happy. Thank you.
Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. Going back to the bonding of the roads. If you were to bond the roads, and this goes through the chair to the mayor, the chair to the, Mr. Boz. And you pay to, say, $2 million, that's a 10-year bond, approximately we pay back 2%, 2.5 if you want to go high, you're looking at, what, per year, a little over 200,000 a year? And if you did that, can you move, if you bonded it this year, then you could take that money and keep it in the budget, and then you would have your $2 million. Is that possible?
The electric pilot would be moved to the Capital Non-Recurring Fund regardless.
Well, the mayor said you could do whatever you want with it.
I...
The sky wouldn't fall.
I'm not authorized to do anything I want with it. I, it would still go to the Capital Non-Recurring Fund.
You said nobody would get arrested.
Okay, nobody'd get arrested, okay. So nobody would. I think I said that.
I said what I said. It was not that the sky was falling. We would have to change the ordinance probably in order to authorize that to happen.
And I think at that point, I said, but who's, anybody gonna get arrested for it? The only reason I think that Mr. Zandry makes a, Jason Zandry, makes a reasonable motion here, is somebody just said, you know, next year's gonna be worse. Well, you never know. You can't go on the assumption that every year's gonna be worse than the previous year, as some people say, because you don't know until that budget comes through. You hope that the town, if they do their due diligence and planning, you would find new revenue sources, because they are out there, and make the effort to do these things. The council, I would hope, there was discussion of revenue sources earlier in some of the budget meetings, that hopefully they would look at these things. I know the mayor, you know, you've been here for 20, 30 years, I don't see revenue coming in, it's always cut, but there are ways of doing things. I got off track here. The, I just think that we, this would be a reasonable thing, you'd do it anyway. If you did pass it, this is procedural, could, the mayor then could veto the budget if he wanted to? What happens at that point? If the mayor, if, Mr. Mayor, if they pass it, the council passes us, what happens? What would you do?
Charter outlines the procedure. A veto is possible, and then there'd have to be a vote to override the veto.
And you would need how many votes to override the veto?
Requires seven votes.
So a supermajority?
It requires what the charter says, which is seven votes.
So even if a councillor or two voted in the affirmative because they feel it's a reasonable plan, you know the mayor's gonna veto it anyway, so hopefully you'll send a message to the citizens that this is what the council really wants, and it is good for the citizens of Wallingford, and let the mayor veto it. Thank you.
Larry Morgenstein, South Main Street. I think all of you up there, you could see it in your faces, you've gone through another long budget season. It all comes down to, you've got two similar budgets, it is the same budget, but there's one major difference. And that's whether you believe that it's raining and that the money needs to stay, that we've built that steadily over the years, or after years of tax increases, whether maybe the taxpayer who ultimately is who all of you are up there serving should get a break. Could anybody tell me, when is the last year there wasn't a tax increase in Wallingford? How many years has it been without a tax increase? Or with? John?
I said 16, 17. Yeah.
Well, that would be quite a long time ago, but in my memory, I can't remember the last time. I think you're, we've done things by row, and it has worked by and large for this town for so long. And again, I don't mean to make this discussion something not as serious, but I think of the fireworks funds. We did that for years, and then the town decided it couldn't afford it, and the taxpayers did it themselves. And that came to a point where they couldn't do it themselves any longer, they decided that they couldn't. And they came before the council and said, "Well, we could do the fireworks itself, we could do like 30,000, but could you give us a break and fund the overtime and stuff?" And that was a big change. The council hadn't been willing to change because they hadn't done that. But the council changed it, and the fireworks went on, and the world didn't end. And then they found a different way this year, to relieve that burden from people raising the money in the same way. You have the chance to do things differently, and a year down the road, there's different opportunities available for how you do things. I think everybody up there has taken time this year and looked at the budget and said, "We could do better," but that didn't happen this year. And nobody's asking that this become a yearly option. Nobody would agree that that would be fiscally sound. But we do have that money that the taxpayers paid in. It's not a long-term policy, but it is asking for relief. And I hope that tonight, that, yeah, we tend to be creatures of habit, we do it because that's what we've done. Some of you have broken out it out a bit and thought, maybe this year could be a bit different, and hopefully that will continue. Hopefully, there'll be a vote tonight, and then that process will continue of looking at these budgets and seeing where could we do better. But at this point, the budget is fixed. Really, the only decision you make with your vote tonight is whether taxpayers get relief or we take from the rainy day fund, which has been building and building and building with tax increase after tax increase. So take a moment, think, it's for the people that you represent. And again, you can make an argument, you're representing them either way, but for years, the decision has always been to increase that burden on them. This year could be different.
Any other comments from the public? Mr. Chardulo.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna call a question. I think we've been at this, we've heard everybody multiple times, and I think it's time to take a vote.
Is there a second to the motion to call the question? Counselor Letourneau, your motion fails. Mr. Chardulo.
Paul Chardulo, Two Bayberry Drive. I just want to make one last comment, and that is, somebody once said, I don't know who it was, somebody famous, said that you never know what your decision is going to be until the moment of execution. So those of you who have already stated you're a no vote, I ask that you reconsider it and internalize what you've heard and maybe change your mind.
Any other comments from the public? There being none, I bring it back to the council. Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a question for Mr. Boz. Mr. Boz, please, if you could refresh my recollection, what was the mill rate that we set last year?
For the current year that we're in now?
Yeah.
27.47 is the current mill rate.
Okay. So I just heard people say that if, if one was in favor of this proposition and voted in favor of what's before us, that there would be no tax increase. But that's not factually accurate.
No, it's not. It's very difficult to, regardless of what budget you pass, because of the implementation of revaluation.
Agreed.
Some folks, some folks' taxes will go down under both mill rates.
But then when the mill rate goes up, taxes go up.
But the mill rate is going up.
The physical taxes might go down because the item being taxed has a lower assessed value than it did previously.
Correct.
But nonetheless, both propositions that are before us tonight raise taxes.
The mill rate increase under the mayor's was from 27.47 to 27.89, and under the proposed changes that the council made through your motions meeting last week, it's the item that's in front of you, and item number three is 27.63. So it's going up either way, that's correct.
Yeah, okay, I just wanted that to be clear.
Yes, the mill rate's going up either way.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments from the council? There being none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Fishbein?
No.
Laffin?
No.
Letourneau?
Yes.
Marone?
No.
Chortel?
No.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman Savoni?
No.
The motion fails.
Is there a motion to adopt the total general fund expenditure budget as amended?
May I? Question? Board of Wonder?
Counselor Testa.
Well, I guess I'll find out what as amended means when the motion's made. I'm confused. I thought the last meeting, we did amend it and take all these changes, make all these changes. So, is that correct?
Yes.
So we had put back the money that the mayor had cut?
The mayor didn't...
Well, the mayor had lowered his budget.
The mayor made a proposal...
No, suggested that we do it.
And it failed.
And it failed, so, yeah, that's true. All right, I got it. So was it amended at all? It was amended by $20,000, right? Or something like that?
Well, it was also amended by Counselor Zandry's motion on the surplus. That's what's being considered tonight.
Okay.
Yeah, good.
The 20,000 is actually missing. If you actually look at what we're moving, we're moving 158,250,163, and if you look at the mayor's proposal, it's $20,000 higher on page, whatever, in the book. That's the $20,000 differential, correct?
That's correct.
So, at this point, we're moving to adopt the expenditure budget, but it'll go down the same way because we can't have those, that would be an imbalance if this were to vote through, but I'll move it for, to move it along.
Second.
To make, you know, to make a motion to adopt the changes per the, per your point.
If you could make the complete motion, that'd be helpful for the record.
So I'd like to make a motion to adopt the total general fund expenditure budget of 158,250,163, per the changes made to the mayor's proposed budget on the attached reconciliation details sheet for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2016.
Second. Moved and seconded, did you get the second? Okay. Any discussion on the council? Discussion from the public?
Gina Zandry, Nine Balls from Red Circle. I'm a little bit confused on this motion, so if somebody could give me a little explanation as to what you're voting on?
Well, according, according to the changes we made, the, we have the revenue side and the expenditure side. When you vote on the budget, they both have to balance, so as procedure of what we've got here, we've got to take up the other side of this piece of it. It'll likely go down along the same lines. I can't imagine we would suddenly adopt the expenditure side and not have adopted the revenue side. And it'll just, with that failure, go back to the mayor's budget.
And actually, if I may add, by state statute, you'd have to adopt a balanced budget.
Right, so it almost, it has to fail. This, if this somehow miraculously passed, we would be imbalanced.
Yeah, that would be, I'd have to toss that one to Attorney Farrell, and then I'm leaving for an hour.
So, Mr. Chairman, point of law, why are we even doing this, then? If, if...
Well, we do need...
It has no effect. If we don't make this motion, and it doesn't do anything, the revenue has to meet the expenditures to have a balanced budget anyway. By default, you end up with the same thing as proposed by the mayor, April 1, I think.
I believe so. Same thing with item three.
So if I, if I may, since the question was kind of posed to me.
It was.
Thank you. In theory, if this motion passes, we could go back to the revenue budget to adopt to, somebody could move it to match. So...
If I may, what you're headed for is to vote on approving the mayor's proposed budget. budget. Is that correct?
If this motion fails...
Forget about this motion for a second. I just want to get to what you're ultimately striving to do here, with this little technicality. You're striving to eventually end up with the budget that the mayor proposed initially.
If this motion fails, that's the result.
All right. So why don't you just make that motion and get it over with? Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? I did call your name, didn't I?
I know. The motion on the table would result in what? That's a question. At our last meeting, we were presented with, I'm just clarifying, with the suggested, a list of suggested cuts, including 500,000 from the Board of Ed and about 516,000 from general government. Is that correct? I'm so far out, so good.
So, those cuts were proposed, they were moved, and they all failed?
They all failed.
That's correct.
So right now, the motion on the table is...
Except for the $20,000.
Yeah, except for the $20,000. Basically, the budget we've been looking at all along. With no further cut to the Board of Ed and no further cut to anything else.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the council? Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you. Just to be clear, Counselor Testa, my understanding is that the motions before us is to approve the budget utilizing the surplus, as you gentlemen have been arguing in favor of tonight. The intent of the motion is to, is merely that. So, number one, failed attempting to do that, and that was the revenue side. So, the powers that be have determined that we need to make some motion with regard to the expenditure side, and the current motion that's on the floor is the same scenario that failed with the first one. So your vote in the affirmative would be to use the surplus, as you have argued.
That's what I'm asking. So that is still part of the motion before us now. But the only way it could have legal effect, my understanding, is then if that passes, we'd have to go back and modify the one that just failed.
I would agree with that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mayor.
Just as a clarification, if, there's no necessity to have to vote on this. The issue is whether you adopt a budget or not. If the revenue failed and no budget is ultimately adopted, it's not adopted. Now, there are other motions in here that deal with other aspects that you'd want to proceed with, but, you know, I don't, I don't know that there's a mandate because revenue was voted on. Expenditure, you could have both here, and no one ever made a motion on either one, and the result at the end of the meeting would be the same. No budget was adopted.
With that in mind, we can either vote on the motion on the table, or the motion can be withdrawn. We can also skip the establishment of the mill rate and move on to the enterprise
May I inquire, though, if we skip over number two, don't we have to set the, or attempt to set the mill rate?
We'd have to make an adjustment to that motion because...
Yes, it would be the 27.89.
No, because if we don't act on the mill rate, the mill rate that's adopted will be the one proposed by the mayor on April 1.
Agreed, which I think was 27.89.
I believe Mr. Fishbein is correct. I'm going to ask Jerry to chime in if I'm interpreting it wrong, because the mayor's budget in the budget letter has his mill rate calculation, if you will. But I believe the council, as Mr. Fishbein has stated, has to set the mill rate to match it. So this would have to be adjusted from 27.63 to 27.89.
You've got to get that $2 million from somewhere, and you won't get it at 6.3.
27.89. Actually, it's not the 2 million, just a...
The differential.
It's the 1 million, and we're going to increase all of the, the state grant revenues are all going to go back to the mayor's budgeted amounts, which are approximately $1 million too high. So that's how we're coming up to the 2 million. But I understand what you were saying.
Right.
Well, that's a question I want resolved. Do we have to, do we have to set the mill rate tonight, or if we don't, does it revert to the mayor's proposal?
No, our understanding is if there is not a budget adopted, it's impossible to set a mill rate.
Correct.
That follows. I mean, it's...
So it reverts.
Once those are, once those are adopted, then the mill rate is a mathematical calculation. So there's no ability to adopt a mill rate if a budget hasn't been adopted.
But, but then does, does the mill rate get set based upon the proposed...
The mill rate would be set in accordance with the proposed budget as set forth, I believe we, in the letter.
Well, I...
All right, one at a time. And Counselor Laffin's been waving his hand at me for the past five minutes.
I think it would be a lot faster if we just called the question and took the vote and been done. So I move we call the question.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'm sorry. I might have inadvertently misjudged. I believe the charter refers to if there is no budget adopted by the council, then the mayor, then the mayor establishes the mill rate.
Okay.
And that's, and that was my, where I had a question, because if the mayor's budget's getting adopted, a mill rate's got to be set.
That's right. The mayor will set the mill rate. That's correct.
Okay. There's been a motion to call the questions. There is a second.
I'll second, I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, well, let's do a roll call vote on calling the question.
Of what?
Number two.
Calling the question. Okay. Fishbein.
Yes.
Laffin.
Yes.
Loterno.
Yes.
Marone.
Yes.
Chertel.
Yes.
Sullivan.
No.
Testa.
No.
Zandry.
No.
Chairman Savoni.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, please call the roll on the motion.
What's the motion?
The motion is to adopt the general fund expenditure budget of 158,250,163 per the changes made to the mayor's proposed budget on the attached reconciliation detail sheet for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2016.
Thank you.
I believe you seconded it.
Yeah.
I believe you seconded it.
Yes, I'm aware of that.
Fishbein.
No.
Laffin.
No.
Loterno.
Yes.
Marone.
No.
Chertel.
No.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Testa.
Yes.
Zandry.
Yes.
Chairman Savoni.
No.
Motion fails.
Okay, moving on to... Of the proposed motions, number four, to adopt the budgets of the divisions of the Department of Public Utilities.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the budgets of the divisions of the Department of Public Utilities for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2016, as herein posted.
Is there a second? Thank you. Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the public utilities? Is that a yes?
Yeah, I have a question. All right, so we just, we just voted down the last motion.
That's correct.
So we haven't adopted a budget?
That's correct.
All right, and if we don't do, if we continue down this path, then the mayor's budget will just become the budget.
That's correct.
That's correct, correct?
That's correct.
All right. Thank you. Thanks. Over.
Okay. I got you. Counselor Laffin.
And so, for kind of a point of order, we still need to approve, it's, these are the separate division budgets.
Yeah. These are enterprise funds. They're separate budgets.
Yeah, thank you.
Counselor Zandry.
Yeah, that's what I wanted clarification on, that these are actually additional budget line items.
They're separate funds.
They're separate, separate from the main budget, which we just voted down.
That's correct.
Right. I believe you can use the terminology as presented in the motion detail, if you wish, unless you want to read them all. It's up to you.
As presented.
Okay, that's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion in the council? Questions or comments from the public?
Who made, may I, who made that motion?
Mr. Laffin.
And Chertel seconded.
Mr. Chertel seconded. Ready for a vote?
It appears as so.
Thank you. Fishbein.
No.
Laffin.
Yes.
Loterno.
Yes.
Marone.
Yes.
Chertel.
Yes.
Sullivan.
How did Craig vote? He said no, right?
He said no.
Testa.
Yes.
Excuse me. Zandry.
No.
Chairman Savoni.
Yes.
The motion passes.
The cap and nonrecurring budget.
I move we adopt the budget of the capital nonrecurring expenditures fund for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2016, in the amount of $2,264,528 in revenues and $2,264,528 in expenditures.
Second. Moved and seconded. Discussion on the council. Discussion from the public. There being none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Fishbein.
No.
Laffin.
Yes.
Loterno.
No.
Marone.
Yes.
Chertel.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Testa.
Yes.
Zandry.
No.
Chairman Savoni.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Yes, it does. Special funds of the Board of Education.
I move we approve the special funds of the Board of Education of the Town of Wallingford for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2016, as attached.
Second. Moved and seconded. Discussion from the council. Discussion from the public. There being none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Fishbein.
No.
Laffin.
Yes.
Loterno.
Yes.
Marone.
Yes.
Chertel.
Yes.
Sullivan.
I'm thinking. Yes.
Testa.
Yes.
Zandry.
Yes.
Chairman Savoni.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Yes, it does. Is there a motion on the special funds of the Town of Wallingford for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2016?
I move we approve the special funds of the Town of Wallingford for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2016, as presented.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion from the council? Discussion from the public. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Fishbein.
No.
Laffin.
Yes.
Loterno.
Yes.
Marone.
Yes.
Chertel.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Testa.
Yes.
Zandry.
Yes.
Chairman Savoni.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Is there a motion on the capital appropriations and force reserve fund?
I move we approve the capital appropriations and force reserve fund for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2016, in the amount of $990,704 in revenue, revenues, and $990,704 in expenditures.
Second. Moved and seconded. Discussion from the council. Questions or comments from the public? There being none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Fishbein.
No.
Laffin.
Yes.
Loterno.
No.
Marone.
Yes.
Chertel.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Testa.
Yes.
Zandry.
No.
Chairman Savoni.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt the ambulance and EMS transport enterprise fund for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2016, in the amount of $2,184,231 in revenues.
Mr. If I may, that has to be adjusted now because you've, did not adopt the general fund budget, which had the $20,000 reduction in what would be ambulance fund revenue and the $20,000 reduction in the ambulance fund expenditure. Because in other words, that $20,000 in the general fund is going to be moved to the, to the ambulance fund. So you have to put the $20,000 both into revenues and to expenditures in the ambulance fund. Sorry about that. I should have...
That's okay.
Said that before you made your motion.
So, can you please do that math for us?
Yeah.
Yes. Let's see, to adopt for the fiscal year, the amount of $2,204,231 in revenues, including the transfer in from the general fund, $2,069,137 expenditures, and the rest is okay as is.
Good. What's the last one again? Sorry.
Yeah.
$2 million.
$2,069,137.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Okay. I will just state the motion over. To adopt the ambulance and EMS transport enterprise fund for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2016, in the amount of $2,220,231 in revenues, including a transfer. What are you shaking your head for? $2,204,231, including a transfer in general, from the general fund, and $2,069,137 in expenditures, $135,000 in capital, and $155,000 in reapropriation of prior year's capital for the change made to the mayor's proposed budget as presented.
Second. Moved and seconded. Discussion from the council. There being a public comment?
Actually, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. Again, you could kill that last phrase, "per the change."
As I read it.
Yep. "Per the change made." You get rid of that phrase, if you wouldn't mind, Madam Town Clerk. "Per the change made to the mayor's proposed budget on the attached reconciliation detail sheet." You could kill anything, if that is okay to make that suggestion, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Laffin, do you make that amendment to your motion?
Yes.
Counselor Chertel, do you second the amendment?
I do.
Thank you.
All set.
Question. Are we, was there an actual change to the motion? Are we voting on the change first and then the motion itself?
Is there any objection to the amendment?
I have no objection to the amendment. I just want to make sure I know what I'm voting on.
Then it's accepted as a friendly amendment, and you're voting on it as amended.
As amended. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the council? Public? No. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Fishbein.
No.
Laffin.
Yes.
Loterno.
Yes.
Marone.
Yes.
Chertel.
Maybe. No, I'm kidding. Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Testa.
Yes.
Zandry.
Yes.
Chairman Savoni.
Yes.
Motion passes.
What happens to the last motion? Does it still apply?
What motion is that?
To authorize the chairman to sign three copies.
Yes, we'll finalize the budget, and you've got to put your John Hancock on it, per the charter.
All right, so I can sign it John Hancock?
You can sign it any way you want, because the library calls me like on, they'll be calling me next week for it if I don't send them one, so I don't care what you put on it, frankly.
Okay, Counselor Zandry.
So I just want clarification for myself of what we're voting you to sign. Are we voting, obviously, the amended council budget failed, and we're voting for you to sign the original budget? Is that what we're doing?
That's correct.
Clear?
Thank you.
I move we authorize the chairman to sign three copies of the finalized budget, to be filed, two to be filed with the town clerk, and one to be placed on file in the Wallingford Public Library.
Second. That was, I seconded it.
I know that.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the council? Any questions or comments from the public? There being none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Fishbein.
Yes.
Laffin.
Yes.
Loterno.
Yes.
Marone.
Yes.